Agenda item number two, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
President.
Counselor Chenier.
President.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Absent.
Counselor Lazo.
Here.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Excused.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to agenda item number three, subcommittee reports, Department of Public Works.
Mr. Chair, through you, we haven't had a meeting since our last town council meeting. Our next one is scheduled for the 21st at 7:00 PM in the Veterans Room. Thank you.
Moving on to Education Services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, we had a meeting on the 29th and we have one item on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to General Government, no report at this time. I'm sorry.
For the council, there is a General Government Subcommittee meeting scheduled for February 20th at 6:00 PM.
Moving on to Planning and Development. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have no report at this time.
Moving on to Protections of Property, Councilor Chenier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting on February 7th. We have two agenda items tonight that were unanimously approved by those present. And there is one PPP Subcommittee meeting scheduled for September, I'm sorry, February 20th here in the Town Hall.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number four. Concerning accept minutes of the Town Council meeting minutes from A, December 18th, 2023, B, January 8th, 2024, C, January 17th, 2024, and D, January 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of those meetings? Counselor Rivas.
Just on the December 18th, one item, I think it's like line 186. It, I don't know, it's like an incomplete quote. I'm not sure what I said there, but it's like an incomplete sentence. So I'm not sure if we can get the rest of that in there. Thank you.
Any other additions, corrections, or deletions? If not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Chairman's announcement. I'm sorry, Counselor Rivas.
I'm just abstaining from the 1, 18, because I wasn't here.
I should have taken them individually.
Sorry.
There's an abstention on January 8th, 2024, by Counselor Rivas. Thank you. Moving on to Chairman's announcements. Outside of a snowstorm is coming. I hope everybody plays it safe tomorrow. It's gonna, it's gonna hit us tonight into midday tomorrow. Wish everybody a safe storm. Just like to report as Chairman of the Animal Shelter, we formed a committee who was appointed and we, we had one meeting and we're having our second meeting on February 20th. We have the architect, I think the engineer coming in and we're going to discuss site assignments and various approaches on where we go from here. I have no further report. Moving on to Town Manager's announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First off, an update on the Henry Street project for the softball that we're doing the rebuilding due to the fire that was there. The siding has been completed. National Grid is on site. However, they made the project manager from the insurance company aware that they are going to be replacing the pole and the transformer. This was the first time that had been brought up to the town or the project manager. So we'll be working with them to resolve and get that done. So while we had announced the completion date as February 28th, it is now to be determined because of when the permanent power will be established. But they are working together with the electric company to make that happen. In regards to inspections in building, we always have on our mind blighted buildings and buildings that are in disrepair. Just want to announce that we had a meeting with Chairman Lazo, Building, Local Building Inspector Mike Julian, interim Building Commissioner Ted Tetrill, and Attorney Caprera to review the blighted buildings that we have in town and what actions we may or may not take on those projects. Out of that meeting, we have prioritized some of the properties that are immediate concern and we'll be working to remediate those. We did have a long conversation and we did have a conversation with the chairman in regards to some of our zoning regulations. And we'll be working with the council in planning and zoning to recommend some changes in zoning so that with some of these blighted buildings, we may be able to take action and get them back on the tax rolls. Michelle, our Treasure Collective Finance Director, who has been on board roughly six weeks, is working aggressively to not only rebuild her office, but is also taking on and reviewing tax title properties and collections and coming up with a plan of action as to get past payments that were not made to the town, such as water sewer, and to come up with a program for those collections as well as tax title properties. She has reviewed her tax title attorney and is making changes with the attorney and she plans on being aggressive with those. But they do work hand in hand and that's why we're bringing to the council at a later date some of those properties that we have in town-owned properties to sell. We may want to take a look at the way we zone so that we perhaps change dimensions, get them back on the tax roll. So we're working together to come up with a comprehensive plan, what's best for the town of Southbridge. In regards to the storm, as the chairman stated, Casella has announced that due to the storm, trash and recycling bulk will not be collected tomorrow. They will be on a delayed schedule as if it's a holiday. Bulk pickup will be delayed a day and will be picked up on Wednesday. As a result of the town, of the impending storm, after consultation with DPW Director Rich Benoit and Police Chief Shane Woodson, made a determination that would be best to close the Town Hall and town buildings tomorrow. So those buildings will be closed tomorrow. Most employees that can work from home will be trying to do work from home as best they can. We got to the Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise Fund and the Curbside Collection. As I stated last week and just to reiterate, we are working aggressively to bring the opt-out program in place as well as getting the bill in. As a result of the Town Council vote last Thursday, on Friday, we commenced the implementation of the Billside Collection Program and Hannah is working aggressively on that. Anna and Marissa have been working to verify all parcels. Anna and Marissa completed a video today with the cable station. Charles Diaz, our cable manager, is editing that and that should be out within the next couple of days. We've also met with the Board of Health and through Dan, the Director of Public Health, to request a review of the solid waste regulations to make sure that we are comprehensive in what we do for the opt-out program. Because as it stands, every resident in the town of Southbridge that owns a parcel, one family, two, six family, will be automatically enrolled in the curbside collection. There will be a program in place that if you choose to opt out, you must provide information to the town of Southbridge relative to where you are disposing your trash and you must have a contract sent to the town of Southbridge to display that and give that information. And we will work aggressively to get that out. If you looked in the lobby of today in the Town Hall, it actually was out last week, the lobby of Town Hall, the library, community center, there are stands up that explain that the change is coming with the curbside collection. I think that's all I have for that right now. So that information is going out. Anna Smith's last day was going to be tomorrow, but due to the storm, she will be leaving her position. However, we are working to, she has offered to help us one day a week and we'll be working on the budget to try to figure out how we can accommodate that because we do need that during this transition. Lastly, I had a department head meeting last week where we had conversations relative to the operations of the Town Hall and all the projects that we have that I've stated. We had a discussion about the budget process and where we are in the budget cycle. The end of the year, fiscal year 23, we're still working to get that closed by Thursday of this week. FY '25, Dean is working in evaluating budgets and we're really bringing this up from scratch as I've stated before and we're keeping a close evaluation on all accounts. I did communicate to my department heads that the capital plan for this coming year may be lean and that we are going to take a very keen look at all accounts. In regards to this fiscal year, we need to close out the FY '23 so that we can then have a very good, solid FY '24 status. We're keenly aware of all the issues that are going on. We are monitoring the state budgets in which they are not coming in with revenue projections for the remainder of this fiscal year. I've instructed all my department heads to hold off on any major purchases. It's not essentially a freeze, but is, they will have to document a reason why they need to have a major purchase. And we are trying to hold a line on any additional spending for the rest of this fiscal year until we get a stance outside of the staffing that we desperately need. But as far as major equipment or purchases, they have been instructed that there will be no major purchases for the foreseeable future until we continue to evaluate the budget. And I'll have a further update next meeting. And that is all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a couple of things on the curb side. First of all, I've had a few, more than a few residents text and email me saying that there are a lot of people in town that still do not even know that this change is coming to curbside. So it's important, I know I have been hounding you about this, but it is important to get those mailers out. So if you could pass that information along to the health department.
Is there a question for the Town Manager?
Yeah, well.
Yep. So if I could answer, Counselor Marquetti, I did miss that part. They have the mailers. They are going out this week. And I've instructed them to have them sent to every parcel that would, in the town of Southbridge, that would state what I just stated that, who would be opting in, opting out. Those are going out this week. Yes, sir.
And then I do have one more question through you, Mr. Chairman. Not all private haulers require contracts. They simply bill you. You pay the bill. They start picking up your garbage. So I'm gonna, is it going to be acceptable just to provide a bill or do you, because they don't all offer contracts?
They would have to provide documentation that's acceptable to the Board of Health as to the documentation as to that they are getting serviced by a provider in the town.
So just a bill, I would imagine would be good.
It would be up to the Board of Health and their regulations.
Okay, moving on. I'd entertain a motion to waive the rules at this time to move nine, 10, and 11 to the next, to follow six because we have appointments and I'd like to do the appointments so we can give the proper time to the public on the next agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could you add item number 14, the transfer for the police? Is that possible to move it up?
No, I just want to get the, I was asked to do the appointment.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Chenier to waive the rules. There is a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Rivas. All in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Dylan Demers as a maintenance man slash heavy equipment as recommended by the DPW Director, effective immediately pending successful completion of medical screening and ethics.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Since August, we've hired about six machine, maintenance man, machine, equipment operators. We had one open position for that and we had one heavy equipment operator position open during the budget. Last October, we hired somebody, Mr. Doros. So is this replacing Mr. Doros? Or is this a new position through you to the Town Manager?
The individual that you're speaking of resigned his position shortly after being appointed. So this is an open position. We still have three positions open as maintenance man, equipment operators. So this, this is an open position.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present.
I'd just say, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Demers would have been here this evening with the DPW Director. However, in his other employment, he got stuck up in New Hampshire and couldn't make it back down. So that's why he's not here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 10. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Madison Arnell as a permanent full-time police officer for the town of Southbridge effective immediately, based on the Police Chief's recommendation, pending a successful completion of a medical screening, state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, second by Chenier. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Neal was unanimously approved for a recommendation to the full council for appointment to the police department.
Unanimous recommendation to PPP. Town Manager?
Thank you. I'll defer to the chief for the introduction, but just want to state that in meeting this fine officer, she is a welcome addition to our police department and it's not often we get individuals that transfer in or lateral to the town of Southbridge. I'm sure the chief will articulate on that, but I welcome her from coming from a small community that she could pretty much coast in her career. That still has issues, but not to the magnitude we have that she is willing to come to the town of Southbridge to work.
Okay, if I could through you, good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Town, Mr. Town Manager and members of the Town Council. Thank you for having us. Ms. Neal, who is to my left, took the civil service test in the spring. She has had residence preference at the time she took the exam. She scored high enough to be within that band of eligible candidates. She has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. She's been a full-time police officer for four years. Two years of that have been as a detective. She's worked in our Regional Crime Task Force, which is based in our community. She's been in this community many times. She's very familiar with the issues. She can start work almost immediately. It's a substantial cost savings to the community. As you know, we're more than $30,000 to train a police officer and I just, I highly recommend her for appointment as to the position of full-time police officer.
Any questions? No questions. All in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Vote for board.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jane. Moving on to agenda item number 11. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Bridget Boshan to the Recreation Committee, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025, pending state ethics. Recommended, EHNS Subcommittee, November 6th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, as you noted, this was an oversight in our office. We never got it up to the full council. So we apologize for Ms. Boshan having to wait as long as she has, but we were cleaning up the letters of appointment and realized that this was an oversight on our part. So we welcome her aboard to fill an opening in that committee.
Is that true, Ms. Rivas?
Yes, this was recommended unanimously by EHS.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item back to seven, Citizens Forum. Would any citizens like to approach the council to speak to any item that's not on the agenda? Please state your name and address. It's five minutes. If you need an extension, request a five-minute extension. Council will vote quickly to extend the speaking time. State your name and address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Murch. I'm at 101 High Street, second floor. I'm also a member of the Southbridge School Committee and I am a parent of a freshman at Southbridge High School, where they have been protesting for the better part of the last two weeks for change in that building. As a member of the school committee and as a parent, you know, we have to try to take things from an unbiased perspective and look at everything from all sides. But these past two weeks have opened my eyes. Saturday, we held a community, Saturday the third, we held a community forum where parents, teachers, and students expressed their deep concerns and issues with the district. And quite frankly, 100 people can't be wrong that are, that are involved in the district. My son even told me about some of the issues that he's, that have been going on in the school that not, hasn't necessarily happened to him, but he's seen happening to some of his friends and fellow students, that he's seen happening to some teachers. He's openly admitted that it seems like some teachers are just teaching scared of the administration. Now, I've been in management in the automotive industry and service industry for the last 10 years. And when your employees fear you, you're not getting the best out of them. You need to lift them up and bring them further forward into their career. That's what breeds a good work environment. That's what breeds employee retention. That's what breeds a good overall, a good overall environment for not only your employees, but your customers when we're in business. But in the school system, our customers are our students. Our employees are our teachers. And if our teachers don't feel like they can teach or that they're being hawked over every day, then it's only proving a disservice to the kids, especially if the kids are also getting hawked over every day by the same exact person. Multiple report, multiple reports of sexual assault that wasn't addressed. You have reports of students that feel like they're singled out for disciplinary action because of discriminatory practices, either because they're female or because they're people of Hispanic descent. In a district where we have 66% of our students are of Hispanic descent, that presumption or that, that perception should not be there for a learning environment. A student should feel welcome and loved when they come into school and a teacher should feel like the administration has their back, not that they're out to stab it. And that's what it seems to feel like. And I'm going to be quite honest. As a parent, the school committee has been inactive since the mandate that the voters gave in June. The Town Council has been inactive on this matter since the mandate in June. As a school committee, we have no power. So, but as a parent, when I can't go to the school committee for anything, I have to go to the Town Council and as a whole, I'm disappointed. There have been no public action about taking back our schools since it was voted 85 to 15 that we wanted power. And it's high time that this council act because the school committee can't. We're just honestly there for posterity. We can do what we can, but it bears no fruit. But the fruit is to you guys. Y'all have to help us as a community, as parents, as teachers, and as students. We need you to lead and lead this action. We gave you the mandate and you've done nothing. So I'm hoping that after tonight, and you hear all of these people speak, that you take action. Because if not, this community's going to. So you're either going to help us or you're going to get in our way and we're just going to move you out of it.
Mr. Murch, can I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
There's nobody that dislikes this receivership more than me. And I told everybody when they took us over, Southbridge residents went there and wanted to be taken over. I said, don't do it. And now here we are. My question to you is, I was one of the people that brought the ballot question forward. It was my idea and I brought it up. Councilors were in favor and we wanted to send a message to Boston. We were to our representatives who actually have say over the Department of Education. My question to you is, which, which I'm very curious, what action do you think the Town Council can take? Because by ed reform, we have bottom line on the budget. We know we have that power and we are ordered to give minimum school expenditure, which is our high ends are tied. And nobody shares your frustration more than I do. I am just anti-receivership. And I've been that way from the day they took us over. And I, and now I sit here and say, I told you so, but it's on deaf ears because the school committee lost their members' forum. Did you vote to get rid of members' forum?
We didn't have a vote, actually. That was a decision of our school committee chair within guidance from Desi.
So your, your chairman just took your forum away?
Correct. And I fought for it for two weeks. Counselor Chenier and Counselor Marquetti came to two meetings and also advocated for that as well. I did, at one point, motion to add a members' forum, which was voted down.
Shame on your chairman and that action because the one thing that you have as a school committee member, although you might not have the political power of a full school committee as it used to be, the one thing you never want to lose as a human being is your voice. It's important, especially when the town put you in that position, to take their voice to that board. And I know this council here, and I know some of them that were in the leadership, worked diligently to get the commissioner here. And the commissioner fell on deaf ears. Sometimes the commissioner would meet, come to town, I only want to talk to certain people. I don't want to talk to that Lazo guy. I was blocked out. Now I sit here as the chair and I can guarantee you one thing. I am going to Boston and I am working the politics to benefit our community. And I do respect what's going on with this protest because there were things going on that had just gone wrong. A lot of things that are wrong. And I think, working with you, again to the question, what do you expect of your council? Instead of theatrics and pomp, I get that. I was a football coach. I was good at it. What do you want me to do? Because I will do it.
There's multiple different avenues that you can take to, let's say, just demand an investigation into Desi and Southbridge Public School receivership. We can start there. We can start by going to the, if you let me finish, please. We can start by going to the state and demanding an investigation. And if that falls on deaf ears, is the phrase we've been using a little bit, we go to DOE, the U.S. Department of Education. When there's an issue with an employee, they go up the hierarchy. So now that's our chance. But, you know, with the school committee that doesn't have power and a group of people that need the active leadership, as a manager, it's my job to find any way and every way I can to make sure that my customers are taken care of and my employees are taken care of, even if it's inconvenient for me or takes a lot more time than anybody really wants to. But it's about finding that next step, whether it's written out clearly for you or requires a little bit of digging. And, you know, I, I've known your displeasure for receivership since day zero, realistically. But to be fair, since the mandate, I, I can accept the fact that you're saying you're going to Boston, but this is a matter of public action. We need to know these things and there hasn't been any communication to the community on it other than I'm talking to people. And it is also on Desi. It's also on our representatives. But as a Town Council, you have to demand them to come here. We push them. Get blocked on their phones by bugging them so much. Because we're all doing that now, but you guys carry way more weight than we do. So we need your help and we need you to lead us forward.
I, I respect what you're saying. But the thing is, this gentleman to my left, call that receiver out and the commissioner to come to Southbridge and see what's happening here, to see the whole picture, not just a portion of it, not a snapshot. The whole deal is, is hurting the whole town. Our schools are not only hurting us, our kids, they're hurting us economically, educationally. We're not better off now than we were when we had a level one high school, a level three middle school, and our elementary schools were level two. And they walked in, waved their hand. The Department of Education did that. And it's my job to work to try and convince. I tried the big stick. It didn't work. I tried it. Ballot question, all nine yards. So the next option is, maybe we need to call some friends in Boston and work on it. And I agree. And don't get me wrong, I don't sleep nights. I love my town. I continue to work for it. But I think going forward, when the governor ran on a campaign, we're going to get rid of receiverships, I was excited because I knew that the governor was going to win. And then the governor has a lot of weight over the Department of Education. Understanding your political tier or power, we are not going to flip over state government. Your state representative, your senator, those are the people you got to be calling. I offered to load the buses, load the buses, and tell, I'll pay for the buses. We'll take all our people to Boston to a meeting at the Department of Education. That is a voice of people.
If you're willing to do that, I'll help push that word out. I'll take the day off of work and we'll gather enough to fill three or four buses if you can give me a date and a time.
We will be talking on that subject. Town Manager?
And if, with all due respect, yeah, if you had the big stick before, I, I work in mechanics. Sometimes wheel bearing doesn't want to come loose, so you got to grab the bigger hammer.
Mr. Murch, I just, I, as Town Manager, I just want to ask you a question. Like Counselor Lazo, there's been no bigger advocate of the Southbridge Public Schools than I am. And I meet with the receiver. I actually met on the same day unbeknownst to myself and my assistant, Mr. Yakabuchi, when we went to meet with Dr. Villar that morning that the first event took place. My question, and I have said this publicly and I say this quite honestly, while the school committee does not have power, that is true, but you do have a voice. And I've asked individuals to maybe run for the school committee, but you need somebody to lead the charge in your school committee. When the receiver tells me that Desi has assigned an individual to train the Southbridge School Committee, well, what training is that?
None.
Well, let me just. Well, let me just finish. I understand that, and that's what I'm saying. I ask, what is the path to come out of receivership? We all ask that. We've been asking that for years. As town manager now, I see it as even more important. But when we ask the question, what's the path to come out of receivership, there's no urgency to do that. What is the path to train you as a school committee member? I served on school committee for 12 years. Council Alazo has served for longer than I have. It's an important job to be a school committee member, but when you're absent seven or eight years with no school committee, there's no training to tell you how to be a school committee. A school committee has a lot of power, but you have to be trained on how to use that power. They hired an individual to train you, yet that individual, and that's the voice I think the school committee has to take. Why haven't you sought out the school or the town side? Because your biggest criticism of us as school committee members back in the day was the fact that there was no governance relationship between town and school. Well, I think that's the time to build it, is when you're being trained. So as school committee members, you have power and voice, but you need a leader to lead the charge. You have a voice in yourself. Lead that charge with the town manager and the town council will be your biggest advocates for change. And it's about time that we fill this dais with people and individuals, because what happens is, we sit here and we talked about a ballot initiative on council, but there was nobody really here to be there. But you have to continue to be a sensible voice and bring it to the table. I'll gladly work with the town council and any individual to affect change and change the receivership. But use your voice. Get the training, and tell them this is what we want.
I'm going to be honest. When I was chairman of the school committee from 2021 to 2022, I had a series of trainings, including we had the budget training, which was done as a public open meeting, so it wasn't just for the school committee. My premise of it was, well, let's educate the community on how the budget works. That's the biggest point of contention in this town, is the school's budget alone on the school system, is how much it costs us, because it's a lot. It's a good portion of our budget. So I brought that training with MASCE. We can work with MASCE, but that's up to my chair. And to be quite frank, I... Actually, I'm just going to be bluntly honest. My chair's kind of just been complacent and following the direction of whatever DESI and whatever drone at MASCE gives her the same advice that we've had. So I would appreciate, as since we have experienced members, experienced school committee members currently sitting on the town council, one holding the gavel, if you could reach out to the other members, not just the chairperson, and help us and guide us in the right direction. You were there when it was a functioning school committee, so you know how it operates, and you've worked with trainings and stuff in the past. So you can, may not be able to give us the full bore lesson, but giving us the Cliff Notes version and a guide, the study guide to start, would be extremely helpful and beneficial. So I look forward to that, if you can.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Normally, we don't respond when it comes to citizen forum, you know? We can go on forever, and there's a crowd, which is beautiful out here. But I will tell you, last year, I remember sitting down with your chair and vice chair, at least twice, I set up meetings with them and said, "At any time, I want to support you. How do we get you back on track as a school board, because you're not capable of doing it if it turned over tomorrow?" Right? So we wanted to work on that. Six months later, nothing. Right?
Yep.
So after the gun issue, myself, I know Chairman Daniel at the time called for a council hall. We had two or three of them. And we actually brought the senator in here, the representative, and finally the deputy commissioner came in, had a nice conversation. Maybe that, I would like to think, maybe that brought in the consultant, and they took it very serious, but then it died out again. What I would tell anybody in here, and I agree with the town manager, you have so much influence, because you're part of this community. You're on that board. You were elected by the people to represent them within the school. Don't get tired, because everybody seems to get tired with something, and everybody goes up in arms and says, and rattles the cages, and then it just dies back down again. There's supposed to be a system that was supposed to replace the school system here. That never transpired, and we don't know. You know, we're doing our best on trying to make it an advocate. Don't get me wrong, just because we don't throw it on social media or put it out here during council's forum, it's not not happening. You know, having conversations about it and trying to work our way through. I don't want to belabor this, but you mentioned just a few seconds ago, and maybe I didn't... You said there was a sexual assault?
Yes.
Right? And it wasn't reported?
The...
It wasn't reported to the police?
That's from what knowledge I have, which isn't obviously all of it, but a student did try to speak about their experience, but unfortunately just couldn't maintain composure and... Because it's a very traumatizing experience.
Absolutely. I'm not asking names, name...
No, 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 I understand.
But when you come up here and say there was a sexual assault, my ears already perk out, as they just went further to say, "What's wrong? What's wrong with this picture that the police don't know about it, that it wasn't made..." You know, obviously, it's a child or maybe a child or a parent, whatever it may be. I have no idea. And it's usually private. But to come up here and say there was a sexual assault, now that really makes me go, "What's happening here?" I don't want allegations. I want facts on this issue. So thank you. I don't mean to belabor.
That's fine. That's why we put the agenda items. I want to hear what the people have to say. We're going to take longer. We'll take longer.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Chenier.
To echo what Councilor Adams has said, this is the second time. I went to the meeting on Saturday night, and I wanted to hear the people's side of the story. Growing up, my parents already always told me there was this side, that side, and the middle. And I'm hoping tonight that we hear all sides, including the middle, because, you know, we've heard a lot of things out in the public about what's going on in the school and also what is happening in the school. The thing that was disturbing enough for me on Saturday night was the fact that a senior from Southbridge High School got up and spoke in public about being sexually assaulted and nothing being done. And they were clearly stated that, and I was under the impression that night that there was going to be at least a possible police report made of that incident. And then you come forward again tonight, and you mention about a sexual assault happening and nothing happening. Now, for me, if people have a direct knowledge within the school system, that's a mandated report.
Correct.
And nothing's been happened. And I cannot stress the importance of this going to the police department. You want your cause helped? You want to prove a point, what's going on in the school? You go to the source of an investigation, a proper investigation. Accusations were made at the Saturday night meeting, and here again tonight about a sexual assault that's... And it sounds like there's been more than one that has gone on, if I, you know, can take the gist of what you said. So I think something needs to be done on the police end of the business. Thank you.
Okay, let's let some of the other people talk. Mr. Murch, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Council Rivas?
Just if I may, at Saturday's forum, the student who Mr. Murch referred to and her parent were present and talked about a Title IX complaint that was filed in the school. I'm not sure if that student is here or her parent today, but we had advised them to file something with the police department, and certainly we can follow up with that student and see if that was done.
I think what we need to do now is let the students have their time at citizens forum, five minutes. If you want to extend your time, we can extend it to another five. I just wanted to hear from Mr. Murch, who is a school committee member, parent, and citizen. State your name.
My name is Stephanie Johnson. I live at 71 West Street. Me and my fellow peers were asked to speak and share our feelings. I've been in Southbridge schools pretty much my entire life. Six of those years were spent at Southbridge High, and here I am in my last year of high school. We have been through many hardships over the years, constantly losing teachers, no stability or sense of belonging, multiple principals, changing rules left and right, always adjusting. Our schools have never been perfect. Our test scores are always ideal, and our attendance is messy, and there's lots of chaos between students with bullying, fighting, and et cetera. But this year, everything changed. Usually, our issues work themselves out, and never has it gotten this bad. With Mr. House, our director of principals overseeing our schools, we have had a number of wrongdoings and issues. Kids are missing out on the education by spending hours in SSE or getting suspended for things like eating, reading books, or having off days. Kids, families, and teachers are being disrespected, screamed at, and belittled. No emotional support is being offered to kids who need it, just consequences for our feelings. 504 and IEPs are continuously being violated. My 504 was introduced in middle school, and when I got to high school, I spent my freshman, sophomore, and half of my junior year with no 504 because they couldn't get their things in order. According to the school, there was no record of my 504 at all, and when my guidance counselor left last year, all of my documents and accommodations also disappeared right with her. It wasn't until this year that we finally sorted everything out after multiple meetings, and after that, I continuously found myself in SSE over things on my 504 I should have never gotten in trouble of because of. The admin's lack of communication with staff on the 504s, and I am not the only student that has this issue. Not only is Mr. House disrespectful, but he is also unprofessional. When sorting out these issues, when my mom was trying to communicate with them about how much I was getting in trouble, he absolutely refused to speak to my mom over the phone or in person and made another admin step in place. He is aggressive towards women and many other people in the school. From both middle school and high school, kids have felt uncomfortable with his presence and behavior. In multiple surveys throughout the year, students in the comment section have shared their experience of him making weird comments, peeking into bathrooms, and following people around. A lot goes on behind closed doors that nobody talks about, and there's a lot we have been trying to voice for a really long time, and I guess now we are just waiting for someone to hear us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. One other thing that was promised us during, when we met with the deputy commissioner, was the fact that the commissioner was supposed to meet with the leadership here in the town. And that was supposed to happen in the fall, if not early winter. And I don't, I've asked Dr. Vilar, but it really isn't Dr. Vilar's issue, more so Mr. Riley's issue. So, you know, my question to them and to the state would be, why hasn't Dr. or Mr. Riley shown up here to have a discussion with the town council when they talk about the leadership of the town? Thank you. Just wanted to make that for note.
Thank you. And Philip, say your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Kendra Torres, and I am a freshman at Southbridge High. I've been a student in Southbridge my whole life, and I've never seen such unprofessionalism from administration. I have heard many stories from others, but I've also had my own experiences with admin. There is one story I would like to share about Mr. House. One time, I was at lunch, just having a normal conversation with him, and I decided to bring up that one of the boys bathrooms didn't have a mirror, and I asked him if he could bring it up to someone about it. Bring it up to someone about it. And he proceeded to tell me that I didn't need to worry about looking in the mirror and that I looked good. I know this is a normal compliment that may be said to people, but knowing the things Mr. House has said to other students is the reason why it made me feel uncomfortable. This is not something a grown man should be saying to a child, especially in a school environment. And after that, I never really felt comfortable speaking with House. After these past couple of weeks, I started to realize that I'm not the only one with stories similar to this. House has made many students in our school feel uncomfortable and unwelcome, including teachers. I've seen multiple teachers cry during class because of Mr. House and the way he treats them is truly unacceptable. After two favorite teachers of many students had to leave because of the way they were being treated, we have been standing together to show them that we aren't dealing with this anymore. As students, we have done what we've had to do to prove our point. Now it's time for you guys to help us to get what we want to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Martinez. I am a freshman, and I go to Southbridge Middle High School. And a few weeks ago, on Wednesday, January 31st, was a day that nobody will ever forget. Not only did we lose two amazing teachers... Oops, sorry, sorry, sorry. Two amazing teachers that did absolutely nothing but educate us, love us, and actually treat us with respect, but we also lost hope in a change being made with how we were all being treated. I would first like to talk about the lack of respect that from Mr. House that students and staff get when being at Southbridge Middle High. Me and alongside of several students and staff have always given Mr. House respect and appreciation as an administrator. But a common piece of respect that we all know is that if you would like respect, you have to earn it. As students, we all recognize that the administrators are in charge of what happens at our school and how to manage it. But screaming, yelling, and genuinely tormenting staff and students does not show respect not one bit. Having your head down, using your hands when speaking, saying a word after being told not to, and saying "good morning" in a disrespectful tone have all been reasons why students have been sent to the Student Support Center, have been suspended, or threatened with suspension. We can't even simply show any emotion at this school without it being considered disrespect. The second thing I would like to bring up is the lack of education we are getting with the environment we are in. Every day during school hours, I always see two to four people getting sent to SSE by not only the teachers, but the administrators as well. I understand why we have the Student Support Center when it is used for the right reasons. But when it's being used more as a jail cell than, rather than a support center, is when there starts to become an issue. Being in the SSE means that you will be getting the support and reinforcements to go back to class with a better, more suitable attitude for school. But when you are constantly being nagged or yelled at for not meeting their standards doesn't really show much support for the students at all. Taking time out of our learning to go to the SSE for unnecessary reasons just puts more trouble with the lack of class time, assignments, and tests we are having to add on to our backs, which then leads into lower test grades, lower test scores, grades, and less chances for a capable, successful future. And lastly, I would like to speak on the lack of professionalism that has been deemed at our school. What happened a few weeks ago on Wednesday was completely irresponsible and completely unacceptable. Putting in your two-week notice and getting escorted out of the building while having a whole class of students present is never okay. Having students cry on you about seeing the only teacher that openly understood them is absolutely heartbreaking. It created a non-emotionally safe environment for everybody and anybody. During class periods the last couple of months, I have seen him walk into class and talk with the teachers loud enough where the students can hear him saying things about the teacher, needing to call out certain students for not following his standard. If the teacher is getting a lesson completed with not having to send anybody to the SSE, why should we be getting our class time taken away just to be lectured about something that isn't an issue? Having to hear from a teacher "we have a visitor" or having a cold word from one administrator would be near the door shows the fear that the teachers had in losing their jobs or getting yelled at publicly or privately by Mr. House. Having to see a teacher break down crying or need to take a seat by how stressed they are shows the need of a change to happen in Southbridge Middle High School. We need a change, and we need it as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. State your name.
Good evening. My name is Maxon Ortiz. I reside at 465 Charlton Street, and I am a freshman at Southbridge High School. I would like to begin by talking a little bit about the event that happened approximately two weeks ago. As we were all coming up, first thing we noticed is a huge response out of admin. Huge response, like huge response as if there was a fight. Admin running up the stairs, running this way, that way, to all find out that when we come upstairs, all it is, is there are two teachers being fired, being walked out of the building in front of all of their students, in front of all of their students, in front of all of their fellow teachers, in this extremely unprofessional way. I mean, it's one thing if you actually have a genuine reason to feel like you have to let the teachers go, but there wasn't. And even if they did, there's a professional and unprofessional way to do it. The way that it was carried out, going upstairs, firing two teachers in front of all their students and coworkers, is extremely unprofessional, especially on admin, with admin knowing that they're already dealing with a community of kids who, a lot of kids already have trauma and anxiety as it is, and you're going to sit there and fire two teachers over, in front of all of their kids and students and act like that's professional. And as admin are up there going, trying to usher everyone to class and telling everyone, "We can't talk about it. We can't talk about it," acting as if this is this everyday thing that happens every day, everywhere, and it's not. It's extremely unprofessional. But unfortunately, it's not the first thing that's ever happened at Southbridge High. On a daily basis, I and a lot of other students see countless, countless incidents of teachers being harassed, teachers being belittled in front of their students. being harassed, teachers being belittled in front of their students, uh, in front of other teachers, and, and again, in, 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 in an extremely unprofessional way, to where I have also, among a bunch of other students, have seen teachers break down in tears, and it's devastating. It's not, it's all, it's devastating for them, it's devastating for us as, as, as teens who have to go to this school to have to see that. No one should have to see that. No one should have to see it. That, and any concerns that ever get brought up to SPS about anything are always denied. Like, they come in and they, you know, will often claim in public addresses the agenda of, well, we support what students say, we support what teachers say and their concerns, et cetera, but their actions don't show it. Every time a student, every time a teacher tries to say something, it's like cancel culture. You get canceled. They don't like what you say, they get canceled. It's horrible. It's awful, again, to have to see as a student, and it's awful to have to see anyone to have to live through that. It's the amount of, of, of stuff that they also cover up. Like, I've seen it myself. I've seen male admin go into female bathrooms. I've also seen female admin go into male, uh, male student bathrooms. Again, acting as if this is a way, as if this is, there's nothing wrong here, and that this is something that happens every day. A lot of people ask, okay, well then, why don't teachers say anything? Well, because they're afraid they're gonna lose their jobs. Because in spite of the way that they, they treat teachers, teachers are human, they have families to feed, they have bills to pay, they have, they also have their personal lives. And nobody should ever have to have and feel like in a workplace threatened like that, to have that threatened. No students should ever feel like they have to fear going to school. School should be a safe environment, both physically and emotionally. It's horrible that students have to fear going to school because they're feared that they're going to get harassed sexually, verbally, emotionally. And it is heartbreaking, especially for me, to have to, to have to wa, wake up in the morning, and I'm sure for any kid, to know every day that you have to go and walk in and spend a whole day in this depressing environment that you always have to be feared. And SPS will not even take any responsibility for anything because they cover everything up. It's sad, it's awful. And I hope that Town Council will look into it, do what they can do, and help us to regain the power of our schools. A lot of people may say that we are kids, we are teens, we don't have a voice. And I only ask those people why. We're the ones, as well as us and teachers, who have to go experience this day after day, hours and hours on end. But we're not supposed to have a voice. That doesn't make sense. It shouldn't make sense. There are a lot of things that need to change at SPS, and they need to change quickly. We are not just doing this for us, we are doing this for our, you know, fut, you know, younger cousins who have to go into this school, for future generations, for our future kids, or for our future family, so that they don't have to grow, grow up in a school system like this. Thank you for your time.
Raise your name. Thank you, Max. I just wanted to get your name and last, first name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Olga Torres Lopez, and I was a Spanish teacher at Southbridge High School. I have sixteen years of teaching experience, five districts, and never have I walked away from a school in the middle of a school year. One, because it is unprofessional, and two, because I know how traumatic and detrimental that is for students to deal with and continue with the educational process. On Wednesday, January twenty, January 31st, 2024, after being sick on and off for a few weeks physically and emotionally, and after two meetings with HR to discuss the demoralizing and toxic atmosphere that is felt in the high school by both students and teachers due to Mr. House's scare tactics and profoundly inappropriate use of power, and during which I was basically told that things wouldn't change and that sometimes we have to realize when it is time to move on, I submitted my letter of resignation to Dr. Ortiz and Mr. Metzger at 7:00 AM with the last day being Friday, February 16th. Before I sent the email, I called Dr. Ortiz personally to let him know about my decision, and he asked me, effective immediately, to which I responded, "no, two weeks." His sigh of relief said it all. I went in that morning ready to let my students know that I would not return after February break. Working with these students, I have come to recognize their triggers, their fears, and how easy they dysregulate with change. I was able to teach through fourth period during which time I informed my students of my decision and gave them the time and space to process what that meant. During transition between period four and five, a fight broke out between two male students, and both Mrs. Linton and I separated the students. One of them, one of them ended up in my room where Mr. House and the rest of the admin team stepped in to remove him and escort him to the SSE. I walked behind them to make sure the students followed through as they tend to lash out harshly at Mr. House. On my way back to my classroom, Mr. House informed me that Mr. Metzger would be in to see me in my classroom. I said, "of course," and "thank you," and walked away. Mr. Metzger and Mr. Hipper, one of the VPs in the building, were waiting for me at the door. They asked me to step into my classroom and proceeded to tell me that they were accepting my resignation, putting me on administrative leave, that they would pay me my two weeks, but that I had to leave right then. I asked to finish the day with my students, and they said no. They told me to pack as much as I could carry out, as I could only make one trip, and that I would be escorted to the door. They asked that I not speak to anyone on my way out. I packed as much as I could and followed them out as my students watched through the glass panes of other classrooms. Why was I treated like a convict? Why traumatize students by making them watch their teachers be walked out of the building? That is supposed to be the safe space, like, their safe space. I did resign, but not because I wanted to, but because Ms. Linton and I were bullied into submission by Mr. House, and we had reached a breaking point. The school feels like a totalitarian state. Teachers are shamed for being absent for medical conditions and diseases. Teachers are also told they don't care about the kids if they don't conform to Mr. House, when in reality, it is Mr. House the one that doesn't care. We've been told plenty of times to keep moving forward, no matter what student doesn't get, they will catch up. Please show me how, because the numbers and the data prove otherwise. Dr. Vijad and Mr. House are lying in their letters, presentations, and meetings to the public and the Town Council. Dr. Vijar straight up lied in his part point to the Town Council that we have monthly emotional support meetings for students when we haven't had one. The corruptions of, the corruption of members of the admin team is all around. I have always wondered why, for a school of 400 students, who are never all present at the time, and our attendance data shows, do we need five administrators plus Mr. House? Why, if Mr. House is only the Director of Education, is he the one to oversee any and all behavior issues? They shame kids for unjust moral character when we have cheaters on the staff. The fear we feel when Mr. House or administration walks in the room is debilitating for the adults. Can you imagine what it's like for our students? How many times do teachers walk out of professional development meetings sobbing because what Mr. House was saying and asking us to do completely contradicts good pedagogy, promising pedagogy, trauma-informed pedagogy, culturally responsible pedagogy? How, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. How, he would compare us to districts that were nothing like ours and would say, "we can get there." Mr. House has gone so far as to add himself to teacher formative evaluations, sometimes without even informing those teachers. On top of that, he will give needs improvements and make comments on how teachers are not doing their job when he hasn't even stepped foot in the classroom to observe. Mr. Lenders had fourteen counts of inappropriate behavior filed against him under a Title IX that was a sealed and confidential file, and someone at district level unsealed the document illegally and showed Mr. Lenders. Then he approached one of the staff members who was part of the grievance and confronted them about it, bringing up information that was in the sealed document. There is constant avoidance of IEPs and 504s by Mr. House under his teachings and behavior management system. Mr. House wants us to follow his view of teaching, and that is to not follow kids and staff accommodations to the letter of the law. That is illegal, and any, any educator who knows the law and wants to keep their license should be standing up and saying no, but they are scared. In the past thirteen days, I have spoken to past and present students, parents, educators, colleagues, and even an administrator of Southbridge Schools, and it pains me to hear their stories. Some were let go for standing up and speaking about injustices to students and faculty. Some were made to sign non-disclosure agreements in order to be able to move on from the district, and some chose to walk away feeling like there was nothing else they could do. I couldn't. As I was driving away from the building that Wednesday morning, a text came into my phone saying that the school had gone nuts, that students had revolted and were angry at how I had been treated. I was told that students were done and that they felt disrespected and unheard, that it was time to make themselves heard by Dr. Vijad, Mr. House, and the rest of the admin team. This is just the tip of the iceberg. You need to understand that although the love, respect, and admiration the students have for me have sparked a fire under them, their protests are not about me. They are fed up, they are tired, and they are ready to speak. Thank you for your time.
Uh, my name is Bethany Linton, the Ms. Linton she was just referring to. Uh, first, I'd like to say I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak here today and for the council to allow not only my voice, but the voice of many others to be heard on the issues the school district is currently facing. Second, I'd like to shout out all of the brave students, parents, and community members here for speaking their truths lately. Take such courage to do so. You should all be very proud of yourselves. That being said, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not here because I have a lot of courage. I'm terrified right now. I've been terrified all year. I'm also not here to cause problems or make waves. I'm here to beg. I am here to beg the community. So right now, I beg you all to listen, really listen to the stories and truths being told today. Listen to these kids, listen to these teachers, not just with your ears, but with your eyes. Take a look around, not only in this room, but in this community and the school in general, with your whole heart, with your mind, with your sense of justice, with your pride for your community, with your desire to see the next generation succeed and lead. And only with that premise will I now tell you my story, because this isn't about me. It's about these kids, it's about the future of this community, it's about what's right, and it's about the community taking back their school to serve them, not the two Jeffs. I'll cut right to the chase. Receiver ship has to end, and if it can't end now, the two Jeffs have to go. Jeff Valar and Jeff House's leadership are failing our students and our teachers. I know these are bold statements to start off with, but it's the hard truth and nothing but. A simple Google of Jeff House brings up numerous newspaper articles about federal civil rights complaints filed against him in a charter school network in Connecticut, mainly surrounding the mistreatment of students who struggle, those on IEPs and 504s, higher-than-usual suspension rates, putting students who have made nonviolent and non-safety-related mistakes into isolation, bullying, assaults, public shaming of students and teachers. Any of this sound familiar? We've been hearing these stories from teachers, students, and parents alike in the community now for years, and it always loses steam. But we're not the first community House has terrorized. History is repeating itself, and our students' academic experience is not the only thing suffering. It's their sense of self-worth, their mental health, and their safety. Both Jeffs, as well as others in central office, who also came to Southbridge from that same charter school, are well aware this is happening. They're directly responsible. You've heard these stories from our students at their protests on the news lately, the special counselor where they were so brave to speak out about it, and I hope they continue to do so. Really hear them, and then we have to do something about it. There's no need for me to repeat those stories if you've really listened, so once again, I'll just tell mine, and maybe some of you haven't heard that. The end of last year, House and Dr. Ortiz set an impromptu meeting with me, one in which I thought was going to be an interview about taking on the role of math department head. Boy, was I wrong. I was quickly ambushed with questions about whether I was really on board and wanted what was best for our students. I was honestly shocked and unprepared for it. I had already been told I had the job, not just the job, but also the department head job. I was honestly shocked, but those of you that know me know I answered his questions without hesitation, without sugarcoating, unapologetically me. I said, "if you're looking for a teacher who will not ask the hard questions, it isn't me. To be clear, I will never be insubordinate or refuse to do what is asked of me, but I will always be the teacher who asks the hard questions. I will always push us to make sure that what we're implementing is truly best for our kids. If that's not what you're looking for, don't hire me back." House looked me dead in the eye and said, "that's exactly the kind of teacher I want working here. You'll have your letter by the end of the day inviting you back next year, and you'll be the department head." It was also the union rep this year, as well as someone who's been appointed to work on NIASC and accreditation committee. I'm, I'm not a teacher who causes problems. In retrospect, I should have known then, but I gave him a chance for students after their failure of last year to provide the safety that they so longed for. I was wrong. It later came to light that House wanted to break me, and that because I was such a leader, if I fell in line, so would all the others. He was wrong too. Despite receiving meeting expectations on my first formal evaluation of many of the students you saw speak here today, a hundred percent of my students were actively engaged in learning in class. I was deemed uncoachable, combative, and problematic, with an entire paragraph written in my evaluation about not using his specific system in my classroom enough, and that my culture would somehow erode if I didn't adopt his robotic, traumatic behavior management system. From the very beginning, I was targeted by House and other members of the leadership team for asking questions like, "is this really what's best for our kids? Is this system actually causing more trauma? Is the system teaching them how to own their mistakes and learn from them?" Because as we know, our kids make mistakes. They need to learn. Is the system doing anything for them other than teaching them just simply how to comply? I'd also like to be careful to say here that not all of the leadership team shares these opinions. After that first administration observation, admin was in my room almost every single day, multiple periods a day, and the entire ninth grade pods room, all the time, making sure we were following their system to a T. Public, publicly correcting us, talking down to and degrading us in front of both students and teachers alike. As a result, my attendance actually dropped. I can show you that data. Students refused to speak or participate while he was in the room for fear of stepping a toe out of line or accidentally saying something or looking a way that he disagreed with, for fear of ending up in SSE or being a cause of me getting in trouble. This is not supportive, safe, or healthy as a learning environment, but the kids have made that clear. What you may fail to see, it's not healthy work environment either. Seven teachers so far this year have left as a result of directly House's system of mistreatment. Many more were dismissed or refused to work under House at the end of last year, great teachers, all of them. I've been compiling their statements, both anonymously and named, which I will share at the next school committee, meeting. There's an amazing pool of talented teachers who love your kids, who want them to grow into positive, productive members of society, but we can't do that. We aren't allowed. Roughly forty percent of our teachers are leaving every single year at this point. Contrary to what Dr. Ortiz and Mr. House are literally actively telling our students right now, it's not because we don't care about them that we left. Yes, that's literally what they're selling our kids in the school and outside of it, that if I really cared, I would have stayed. It's because I care that I left, so I could fight for them, search high and low for someone to do something to change their fate, and I won't let it get quiet again. I want to say publicly that I did not, in fact, abruptly resign, as was put out in the public statement by the school recently. I wanted to stay for our kids. However, I'm also a human with needs, and emotional and physical health began to decline as our pleas were going unheard about the mistreatment going on in this school. So now that I have left, I have the freedom to fight for those kids. He can't scare me anymore. And for the teachers who don't have that freedom, because they have families to feed and bills to pay, I'll fight for you too. I, as well as many other teachers, have reported the mistreatment of myself, other teachers, and students numerous times at the district and building level this year. We filed-
Second by Shinia, all in favor. Appalled, unanimous, for President. Continue.
Thank you. We've reported numerous times at the district and building levels this year. In fact, House has been receiving these complaints, and Valar, for literally years, has swept them under the rug. I've stayed relatively quiet during the student protests imposed by the school, but I will not allow them to state untruth as they did in their most recent public posts. There was nothing abrupt about my resignation until the school made it so. Each time I did report something or speak out, my personal treatment got worse, to the point of my mental health drastically declining, and only received further mistreatment and targeting. Mr. House even repeatedly told me, in my position as union rep, to file grievance for anyone who had complaints, as it wouldn't be the first time, and it didn't scare him. Nothing would come of it. He was right. They don't scare him, because Valar does nothing about them. So I had to go, not because I wanted to, but because I needed to, because I care so much, it literally was breaking my heart to see the mistreatment of my colleagues and the students. I gave more than two weeks' notice when I finally could take no more of the daily abuse. In my resignation, I offered to do anything I could to help for a smooth transition for students, and was told that I could not complete my notice, was on leave until that date effective immediately. No goodbyes, no transitions, no support for the students with big emotions, unless you call an increased police presence in the school that day ushering them into their classroom support. There's been no math teacher in my classroom. I could still be working there right now. No one is learning in my classroom right now. Since Ms. Lopez and I have left, there's been no learning happening in our classrooms. All the students' work this year, which we so carefully filed away for them to use to study for their MCAS or use in their portfolios, has been thrown out in front of them. The middle school dean of students sat in my classroom today to get them under control, intimidating them into compliance from the corner. Enough is enough. We cannot allow them to continue to terrorize our students or our teachers. Southbridge High School students have a right to safe and quality education. They are not receiving it under current leadership. It's time to take the school back. In closing, I'd just like to say one more quick story, because there are just too many traumatic stories to fit them all in and allow for others to speak if they'd like to. Just yesterday, I was speaking with a student about how scared she was to speak today. In fact, we bonded over having anxiety, and both admitted that we'll probably face more than targeting by admin, her in the classroom and me in the papers, and lies told about me in the school and around town. But that's not what she was anxious about. She said, and I quote, "I don't care if I'm targeted, but what if we show them all proof, the evidence? What if we tell our stories and nothing changes? What if no one has the power to do something or anything to change it?" I'll admit, I cried right there in public, just like I am now. See, I thought I cried all my tears when I left, but hearing that her biggest fear is that everyone will see, everyone will hear, and nothing will change, it broke me. Because she and so many other like her feel hopeless, your kids feel hopeless. After many moments of contemplating how to tell her that, in reality, her biggest fear may come true, without breaking her spirit, I said this. If we do nothing, if we say nothing, we know for a fact nothing will change, but if we try, if we speak out, if we don't get quiet again, if we push those in power to do something about it, at least there's a chance that something will change. And so we have to be brave, and being brave doesn't mean we aren't scared. Look at me now. It means we're scared, but we do it anyway, because it's what's right, because you're all worth it. And so, in closing, I beg of you, to those watching at home, to those in the room, to the parents, to the community members, do not let her biggest fear come true. Do not allow these kids and these teachers in this community continue to feel hopeless. Use your voice to back their voice up. Go with us to the people that can make the change. Write your letters. Use your voice. Help us bring about the change in our schools that these students and this community deserves. Help their voices reach those who can bring about the change they're begging for, so they can learn in a safe and healthy environment. It's too important not to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other people who'd like to speak to the council on any issues that are not on the agenda tonight? How are you?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Rivers. I reside at 92 Harrington Street. Good evening, Town Council. On Thursday, February 2nd, my niece was taken out of her class, and she was placed in the Student Support Center, where she was locked within the room with other students for three class periods, for taking part in the protest that morning. And then, once the kids were brought into the auditorium to talk about the protest, they let the kids out of SCC, and my niece was able to go down to the auditorium and start filming what was going on in the auditorium. Later that day, she called me up and said, "Auntie, they locked me in a classroom for taking part in the protest." And my daughter, who was one of the first students at the new middle high school, she was class of 2016, so they went in in 2012, they were the first class to go in. My daughter was also bullied in junior high at Wells, and she told my niece, her cousin, "We'll make signs. We'll make signs, and I'll go back with you tomorrow, and I'll stand with you. I won't let them do that to you again." Well, the next morning, my daughter slept in, so I couldn't wake her up, and she was supposed to meet her cousin at 7:30 at the high school, so Auntie went up to the high school. And I went with the signs that my daughter made, and I held the sign in front of the school with the kids, and I stayed up there all day with them. And the main reason I went there was from my niece, to support her, so that she could protest peacefully, she had her parents' permission, and so that she wasn't retaliated against for protesting. And I stood with those kids all day, and I listened to them talk, and I listened to their stories, and I did it to make sure they weren't retaliated against by the school administration, because no student should be locked in a classroom for standing up for what they believe in. And I wrote the post on the parents' page, because I am the admin on that page, I've been the admin on that page since 2013, when my daughter started school there, and another mom and I created that page, so parents could come and have a voice, because they had no voice at that point. They couldn't talk on the PTA page. And in my post, I talked about, "When you submit your two-week notice and then are escorted off of the premises shortly thereafter, instead of allowing the notice to be honored and carried out, because the school system is operating as an authoritarian style of leadership, you showed us how, this entire town, how unprofessional you are." And I also stated, "The kids, they don't have incorrect information. In fact, they have correct information, and they're talking, and they're speaking out, and they're saying factual information, and they need to be heard." And I listened to them all day Friday. And you can have all the degrees known to man, but simple kindness, integrity, and decency cannot be bought, they are taught. I apologize to Ms. Ortiz and Ms. Linton for what happened to them, because it was wrong, it wasn't right. I know the town of Southbridge I grew up in would never have treated people with such lack of regard and with such lack of integrity. Teachers should be allowed to teach students free of harassment and not retaliated by What I heard Friday was zero volume, not picking a pencil up fast enough, will get you an indirect hearing without you present, and then sent to Student Support Center. Men are entering the girls' bathrooms, female admins are entering the boys' bathrooms and stating, "I can go wherever I want, because this is a public school." Well, that's not right. You can't go wherever you want, especially into the bathrooms. Being locked in the Student Support Center for taking part in a protest, that was wrong. Bending down and screaming in a student's face or screaming in teachers' faces, not cool, not right. This is what I was hearing all day from these kids while I stood with them in support. I know you guys keep saying over and over again, "What can we do? What can we do? What can we do? We're the Town Council. We do budgets, we do checks and balances. What can we do?" Keep applying pressure to local government here, representatives in state and federal, keep applying pressure, because I watched the mayor of Holyoke make a statement stating that he did not believe DESI knew what they were doing at this point, because their receiver, receiver Soto, is working with that school system and that school committee, and has put together an improvement plan to bring them out of receivership. Well, that's what receiver Valar is supposed to be doing with Southbridge and with the Southbridge School Committee, and he's had eight years. And instead of doing what receiver Soto is doing in Holyoke, receiver Valar is going back to DESI and asking for three-year extensions. And now he's on his second three-year extension, and he's gonna go for a third three-year extension, and a fourth, and a fifth, until retirement. He is not gonna leave. So he needs to be pushed out, and so does Mr. House, needs to go. The three Jeffs all need to go, I'm sorry, Jeff Riley, Jeff Valar, and Jeffrey House. They need to be shown the door. All these kids coming forward, I am so proud of all of them, and I told them that on Friday while I stood with them, and I am so proud of all of you for using your voices. It's time to end the receivership. The root of the problem lies with the school administration, and the receiver, and the director of education, and all that admin staff. Do you know they did away with all the educational assistance? So all those educational assistants that were up at that school, that worked with those IEPs, are no longer there. So all those IEPs and all those plans for all those children aren't being met, and that's against the law. It's time to look at a legal course of action. We cannot sit back any longer and just do nothing. It's time to have the difficult conversations with all parties involved. It's time to end the receivership. I don't want to hear that any other student is going to be locked within the Student Support Center, which is supposed to be a room to help. Nobody should be locked in a classroom up at that school. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council this time? If there are no other citizens that would like to address the council, I would just like to thank each and every one of you for being here. Most of all, I think the maturity and respect that the students showed was amazing. I think our students deserve better, and I think this council is behind the school district, as far as its school committee. When we're requested to be at a meeting, I know that the council has tried to do it, I know Carla has mentioned it a couple of times, hey, can you come to a meeting? We're there. There are things that are being worked on, and there are things that we should be doing. Carrying a bigger stick doesn't work. I'm gonna tell you straight up, it's the reason why you're staying, because we tried the big stick, and we got shown who the boss was, that's Department of Education, under Mr. Valar, which everybody knows how I feel about that. But moving on, I'd just like to thank everybody for being here. We will be communicating to some of the leadership of this group, I know I will be, and I know there's other councillors and the manager, we all feel the same way about the receivership. We need to take our schools back. We'll be working on it. Thank you very much. We need a five-minute recess. Vote a town clerk transfer request of $9,000 from account number Fund 0842 Capital Stabilization to an account to be established for a voting machine. In addition, ballot box for the exterior of the town hall, and installation and materials for the installation of the ballot box.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Shinia, second by Ortiz. Any discussion? Town manager?
Councilor McAdoo can ask the question, maybe I'll have the answer for him.
What's about getting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. At the last ARPA committee meeting, we had a spreadsheet with all the money that we had given to each department, and the town clerk's office had $50,000 for voting boxes, and she used $33,000 and had $17,000 left over. We were going by line by line by line to see which money we could get back, so if she has $17,000 left over, why not use that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The original $33,000 was for the shipment and purchase of all the ballot boxes, all the voting machines that we had purchased. The remaining $17,000 was for the poll pads that were purchased from, that are coming in this week, maybe. So that was a pending purchase order that was coming, so there was no more money. I did check that item first, because I did see that on the spreadsheet, and I did go check with Matty to make sure I had the right number, but no, there was not $17,000 left, that's why.
So I can understand wanting to have a ballot box in her office. I'm not too, I don't think we really need another box outside, that's my only reservation about it. I don't like sticking anything in that box out there. I think one box is good enough. If they just would empty it more often, I think that would be good enough. I don't, I just don't see the reason for it. I don't trust those kind of boxes. When I have a bill, I come inside and pay the bill, so I don't have a problem with the ballot box in the office, but I do have a problem with the box outside. The other thing is, we just recently purchased some software to make it easier for people to purchase, to do their billing online, so I really don't see the need for the ballot box outside. Thank you.
So the ballot box was not a request of the town clerk, it was the request of the finance director, treasurer, collector, that she felt that there should be a separation and additional box. So we had put it in for council, we can have further discussion on that specific line item if you wish, but that was a request from the treasurer-collectors position as opposed to the town clerk. So that was not a town clerk. I would just put it on the same agenda item, because they do serve the purpose of ballots and the collection of fees. Ms. Hill felt that it was possibly important because of the number of presidential ballots and absentee ballots that go out, but we can have further discussion on that. But we definitely want to get the machine ordered and in, because we have the presidential primary. So I mean, if you make, if you grant the transfer, that's fine, and we'll hold off on the purchase, and we can have further dialogue, if you'd like.
He brought us good by other councillors. Councilor Shinia.
Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, this is to separate the taxes from the ballots, am I correct?
That was Ms. Hill's intent, yes.
And the reason for that is to have better ballot security, I would say, and better, so that particular box that we use downstairs is utilized for both ballots and bills.
Correct.
So by having their separate boxes would provide better security to the ballots and for the taxes, if I understood the reasoning why.
I believe that was her intent, yes.
Any further discussion by the other councillors? Councilor Vivas.
I do think, I appreciate your adding information about that. I do think it's important to have options for voters. You know, we have just one location for voting, and having that ballot box for people that, you know, drop off their ballots, and the town hall is, you know, accessible, it's downtown. I think it is important, and if they need them to be separated, I can definitely see the point of separating the bills from the ballots and making that more secure, but I do think it's necessary, and maybe we don't all vote that way, but I think it is important to have voters have options in different places to vote.
Any further discussion by any of the councillors? Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has there been an amendment to this at all?
No. No.
Just to take this ballot box off? I wouldn't mind discussing this later on.
I'll make the motion then to take the ballot box off.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded.
Just for further discussion.
To a bandit, for further discussion. Any discussion on the amendment?
Well, like I said, I don't really, I don't like putting anything in those boxes outside. I think when I pay a bill, I want to come right into the town hall and pay the bill, and also we just recently purchased, or voted to purchase software to make it easier for people to pay online. It's not something that I would do, but I still would not trust putting anything into that box outside, not even a ballot would I put in that box.
My reasoning behind this, I have no problem throwing my stuff into the ballot box or bill or anything like that. I just don't know if there's ever been an issue since I've been on the council where they've gotten mixed up or anything like that, maybe internally, we don't know about those things, but just add another box outside, it's a big box, I just, I don't see a real need for it, maybe there is a need for it, but I, based on the explanation tonight.
In talking to the Finance Director, it was more a division between the two and a convenience to the public. The town hall is not open, they can swing by, drop the ballot. That's all it was. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. If the Finance Director says it'd be good for the town, then with the work that she's having to do and with the work that the town manager is asking her to do, I'm willing to support getting an additional ballot box.
Counselor Sheena.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the thing I look at is the fact that in today's world, the questioning of the ballots are always being questioned, about too many hands in the till, so by separating the ballots with the tax prevents, I would think the election group, the town clerk's office is gonna handle the ballots, and the tax collector is gonna handle the tax bills. So I think to prevent any possibility of people saying stuff in the ballots, it's a thing that I'm gonna support, the box.
Okay, the amendment is to eliminate the box. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment of eliminating the box from the agenda item? Two, now, you're already into a vote, sorry, we're already into a vote. Two, say take the box out. To leave the box in? Four. Motion passes, I mean, the amendment passes to leave the box in. The discussion on the main motion, Mr. Buckson, you came up, would you like to speak now that we're not in the middle of a vote? This is on the main motion as it was written.
I just had the question, I thought you were, by saying you're amending to eliminate the box, you were going to eliminate the existing box. I understand Counselor McKedney's comments about he doesn't use that outside box, but the town hall is not open 24/7. The box is very functional for people who do pay their bills by dropping them off in the box, I didn't want to see the box itself eliminated. I'll agree that the idea of separating ballots and bills makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the main motion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Six to one. Motion passes. Moving on to 14. Vote a police department transfer request of $30,000 from account 001210511000 salary to account 001210515100 sick leave to cover the additional costs of the sick leave by offices and dispatches for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sheena, seconded by Daniels. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this was unanimously approved by the subcommittee.
unanimous vote of the subcommittee to approve. Any further discussion? Counselor McKedney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I do have some questions that the town manager can answer. I'm not opposed to this agenda item, I just have some questions about how this, exactly does this work? When a police officer is injured on duty, according to mass general law, they are entitled to leave with full pay. Now, is that something that we are not agreeing to? Is that something that the town has to accept? Otherwise, it does not happen that way?
I'll defer to the chief.
Okay, that's fine.
And if I could, good evening again, Mr. Chair, through you. Under a 111F claim, which is an injured on duty, they are absolutely paid 100% tax-free while they're out on the injury, but we have to cover those shifts using sick leave. So the 111F claim is covered, the town is paying out of our salary account, the full-time position for the police officer who's out for as long as he or she is out, but it's not covered, their shifts are not covered. So we have to use sick leave to cover the back-to-back fill-the-shifts, so we're not short-staffed while that officer's out injured.
So we are, we are accepting that part of general law?
Absolutely.
And also in that general law, it states that the persons or whoever is responsible for that injury to the police officer is legally liable, so I'm going to presume that the town is going to go after that person for damages, so the town could recoup that money?
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, we have attempted that in the past, but unfortunately, some of the people in the clientele that are causing these injuries do not have the funding in place to cover these, it's over $100,000 in some cases, so they just don't have the funding in place, and even if it's in order, if they have to pay it back, they don't.
So a police officer is injured not on duty, they're not entitled to full pay, but we're, I'm going to presume that they're using their sick pay?
Again, through you, Mr. Chief, you're injured off-duty like one of the police officers was for the 51 days. They have established a sick bank, you're on 15 days a year. This officer had several years on the police department, so all of their time off, they were paid full, they were made whole, they were using their sick leave, but while they were out on sick leave, I have to still cover their shifts using the sick leave account. So all the sick leave account for that's here tonight is to cover shifts for officers that are out sick.
Okay, so then that brings me to my last question. Why would you use sick leave account? Why wouldn't you, or salary, why would you transfer salary over? Why wouldn't you use it out of the overtime account? That would make more sense to me.
Okay, if I could, just to refute that, if I used money out of the overtime account, I would be here to do a transfer back into the overtime account. The sick leave is more in tune with what we've always done historically. Sick leave covers when people are out sick, sick leave covers when people are out injured on duty. Overtime coverage is for major incidents, shootings, fires, things like that. Sick leave I try to keep within the sick leave.
The people who are covering them are not getting sick pay, so that was, like I said, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just wondering why it would come out of a sick leave account rather than an overtime account?
Either way, it could be done, but either way, I'd come back before the council and have to move money again.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Sheena.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just, chief, if I'm wrong, but I just want people to understand that 111F covers officers, public safety officers that are injured in the line of duty. It's not necessarily that injury is being created by a perpetrator or criminal event. It could be somebody getting in an automobile accident, somebody could fall down the steps and get hurt while they're on duty, or under the COVID days, collect, you know, COVID, so I want the people to understand that 111F doesn't just cover an injury on duty caused by a criminal, it could, there's a lot of other factors involved.
Certainly, and just to speak to that, good point, Counsel, I do appreciate that. Yes, there's not always someone we can go after, so to speak, for an injured on duty. We've had several over the years that are as simple as falling down on ice in a parking lot, falling down on a search warrant, you know, that type of thing, so absolutely, you're correct.
Is that the case here?
In this particular case, without getting into the personnel issues, this was a violent suspect. This police officer was injured during a struggle with a violent suspect.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? unanimous vote present.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Moving on to 15. Vote a Treasurer Collector Department transfer request of $6,500 from account 001132578100, Council of Reserve transfer to account 001145534200, print forms to pay the 2023 W-2s and the printing of the real estate and personal property water bills and demands that are associated with the original billing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sheena, seconded by Ortiz. Town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I told Ms. Hill that I would cover this tonight, I'll try to do the best I can with this. In her evaluation of her budget line items, she found a shortage in the print forms account, and what we have discovered is last year that account was budgeted at $45,000. The council had transferred $21,000 to cover for the year. Previously in prior years, there was some conversation about that there was all under one account, and they tried to separate it out. However, when the individuals that put together last year's budget, even though there was a transfer of 21,000 of the original 45, when they did the budget, they just level-funded at 45,000. So now there is a shortage, and we do need to get the real estate water sewer bills out as soon as possible, so that's why there's a shortage, and that should cover, she stated, through the end of the year, and those are one of the accounts that we'll be looking at when we formulate next year's budget.
Any further discussion? Counselor McKedney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the town manager. I'm looking at the budget here that we voted on last spring. Print form, which is the number 001145534200, was budgeted at $7,000, and in FY '23 was also budgeted at $7,000.
At print forms?
Print form, that's what I'm looking at. The specialized services was budgeted at 50,000, the year before it was budgeted at 45,000, so I'm just a little confused on this one.
Oh, sorry, it should be, it should be 534300 is the account. That should be postage.
So this is a, so is this just a clerical error? Specialized services, which was 50,000, is tax title shredding.
It's not specialized services.
KNR bond.
It's not specialized services.
It's print form, so I'm looking at print form.
It should be print forms and postage are the accounts that we hit for postage for ambulance, excise demand, so there's, there's forms, print forms, and then there's postage. So there's amount of money for forms and the amount of money for the postage.
Well, okay, something doesn't seem to be quite right here, but...
Well, I definitely know that one of the counts is in the negative, and we do have to print these forms and pay the postage for them, I'll just have to get the right correct numbers for it, so.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? unanimous vote present.
Mr. Chairman, it'll be 6,500, I'll make sure that the right account numbers are reflected and send you the updated form to everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on to 16. There's a typo on number 16, the amount, I'll read the correct amount. Vote to approve and award in the amount of $212,000 to Costello Dismantling Company Incorporated for the abatement and demolition of the town-owned properties located at 17 and 23 Snow Street. That's for the fire station project. Authorize the town manager to sign the contract and any and all related paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Counselor McKedney, seconded by Ortiz. No discussion, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous vote present. Sorry to keep here so long. I didn't even see him sitting, didn't see him sitting there. Okay, moving on to council's forum. Counselor Rivas.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm appreciative of all of the students and the teachers who spoke today, similar to the community forum that we had last Saturday. They shared the same stories that they shared that night. There were some families missing tonight who weren't able to make it, but we will be having another forum in a couple of weeks, we'll be sending out information to the families about a date. I wanted to report and just kind of sharing with people some of the things on my end that I've done. We, I did go to Boston to testify on behalf of the Thrive Act, Bill S246 and Bill H495. Currently, I just checked the website today, the reporting date was extended to Sunday, June 30th, 2024, pending concurrence. I have reports from people that have checked in that it looks like there will be a favorable report. Unfortunately, that date was extended, and, you know, legislation takes time, but I encourage families and people out there to continue writing letters, calling. I have contact information for Joe Commerford, jo.commerford@masenate.gov is the senator sponsoring or presenting S246. The phone number to reach the Beacon Hill office is 617-722-1532. James Hawkins, who is the presenter of H495, james.hawkins@masenate.gov, 617-722-2013. Please continue to contact the State House in favor of these bills. This is the bill that includes eliminating receivership in our state and a process to come out of receivership for the districts that are currently under receivership. This is one of the ways that we can put pressure to eliminate this authoritarian or this state takeover, this legislation, a law that clearly has failed in all three communities, that we know that the mayor has spoken out in Holyoke, we know that Lawrence filed a lawsuit recently, and so we know that this doesn't work in our communities. So I encourage families who are here today and those who weren't able to make it to please continue sending letters, making calls, putting pressure on our legislature and our new, you know, our state representative, our state senator, to be able to get this moving, you know, as we do other things, right? As we take up Chairman Lazo on his offer to go to Desi with busloads of people, we have all of the people, we got the people here, so we can fill the buses and go to Desi and protest in front of Desi. We need to continue to put pressure, and we have to support our students and our teachers. This is the reason that we're not attracting qualified teachers to our district. There is no one that's gonna stay in that environment. It is not a good environment for students or teachers or anyone in there. We know some administrators have reached out to people, people are afraid to speak. I encourage teachers, please reach out to the two teachers who were here, reach out to us, I know people have reached out to me, you know, and other councillors up here. Continue to contact us, send us your statements. I also want to read a little bit from a middle school survey from spring 2022. This was sent to me by the outgoing, one of the outgoing SEA union representatives, Evan Graeber, as he was leaving the district last year, on item number four, building leadership, working conditions, personal days, intimidation, et cetera. These are statements from teachers in this survey, multiple teachers that take these surveys. No structure, run like a prison, uses intimidation tactics when you use your own time off, sick days, questioned every time you use your own time, not professional, calls you out in front of students instead of pulling you aside to speak out about your concerns. Another statement, we basically... Another statement, we basically could not take personal days. We were made to feel guilty and were shamed by the principal for these days and for sick days as well. People had attendance meetings for different number of days. Working conditions made you feel like you couldn't take them. Again, it sounds familiar to what we heard here tonight, to what we heard at Saturday's forum. This is a pattern of behavior from achievement first, I have the articles, those are articles. This survey I've sent to the commissioner, to the Secretary of Education. I've also sent this to Desi. I have not gotten a response either of the times that I sent out information. So they have this information. I encourage people to continue to contact the, the Secretary of Education, the department, the Board of Education, the commissioner, continue to send complaints, letters, you know, document, document, document. And please share any documents or any complaints that you file with them, you're certainly welcome to share them with us. I am working on two items that I will add to our next EHS meeting. We're working on a meeting for next week that I will run that by, you know, our chair so that we can have items that address some of the concerns or the requests that people had today. On another note, I wanted to share the WRTA is rolling out their 50th anniversary, celebrating over the past 50 years, WRTA has continuously evolved to meet the changing needs of its ridership. Most recently, WRTA has been recognized as the longest-standing fare-free transit system across the nation as it continues to cover the cost of fares using funds from the COVID Relief and Cares Act from the Fair Share Amendment for fiscal year 2024. So we'll continue to support the ridership and the fare-free for our community and, you know, WRTA has been servicing our community and has really helped many, many of our citizens be able to go to work, be able to go to school, and we hope to continue their fare-free ridership. Thank you.
Counsel Shinia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the students and the parents and the teachers that came tonight and presented themselves in a respectful manner before council. I, I'm going to sit down with the town manager in the, in the chair and see what kind of options that we have to get in contact with the appropriate state people to hopefully come here and address the concerns that the parents do have. On February 26th of this year, at the senior center, a Dino Taka, I think his name is, is going to be putting on a talk on tour of the solo system at 10 o'clock in the morning and you're more than welcome to attend. On February 29th, 2024, the Board of Health is in conjunction with the senior center is going to have coffee and conversation and the topic of conversation is going to be let's talk trash. The Board of Health is going to come and explain hopefully what's going on with the trash changes that are taking place in April 1st. You don't have to be a senior center, a senior citizen to attend this event. It's the community center and the more people that come to it, the better understanding that the community will have on the change of trash that's going to be taking place. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple items. I wanted to let the veteran, or the town council know that last Tuesday, we received word from the state that we did, we were accepted for the $15,000 SHRAV grant that we had applied for through the Veterans Council itself, matching funds would come from ARPA. We did receive the letter this past weekend, I'll be working with the town manager and Peggy Dean just to make sure through procurement laws that we're following everything to clean up those monuments and rebuild some of them that need a little bit of touching up. Also, I'm looking at doing an ARPA meeting on the 29th of February. I know Abby's gone, just working with the town manager to make sure we have a productive meeting to get where we need to be. That's all.
Is there any idea, I know the Polish club, some of the veterans, I think there's only two or three of them left, wanted to know the timeframe on removing the monument, taking it?
I'll work with Rich for the springtime so we can put it over to the DPW lot. Polish veterans provided us $1,000 for movement, but I'll work with the DPW to do that, just make sure we're doing it right.
Thank you.
Sir?
Counsel Ortiz.
I have nothing, thank you.
Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. In almost six years on the council, one lesson that I've learned is that oftentimes a person will come up to you and say, I have a problem, I want you to fix it. I am so pleased that tonight, we didn't hear that. Instead, we heard, we have a problem, it's serious, and we're looking for your help so that we can work together to find a solution and fix it. And that's music to my ears. Over the last six years, three different chair of the council have tried different methods and means to get the receiver and to get his superiors to come to Southbridge. Counselor, I'm sorry, Chairman Lazzo talks about the stick not being big enough. Maybe he's right, maybe it wasn't big enough and it needs to be made even bigger. We, personally, I tried the soft sell, I tried to broach an olive branch, tried to broker a discussion. I know that former council chair, Joe Van, did the same thing back in his day on the council chair, as council chair, and it didn't get us far. I'm a retired educator, 13 and a half years as an administrator, and the stories that I'm hearing tonight horrify me, absolutely horrify me. I understand what's being said very well when I hear about Title IX investigations needing to be made, because I know what Title IX is and I know how important it is to an educational facility, to our educational process, to protecting our youth. 504s and IEPs not being followed for years, completely denies the opportunity for a solid education for our students. Horrified isn't enough of a word actually, but it, it really is, it's horrific that this has been going on. And the reason why I tend to believe it at this point is, is because it's not just one or two people, it's hundreds of people that are talking about this at this point. It seems that there's some kind of a straw that broke the camel's back. We can debate about what that might be, but the fact is, is that the camel's back is broken and that it's time, we need to get a bigger stick. If we're going to go to Boston, I'll be on that bus, I'll go. I think going to Boston is a bigger stick because while we can invite people here and they can blow us off, meetings in Boston are public meetings, they're our agendas, and they are accessible to the public. And if they hide, if they want to hide from the public in Boston, then I don't know where they can run to except not show up at all for work that day. And that would say an awful lot. We need to make the stick bigger because they're not listening to us in the past when we were talking quietly and softly and offering olive branches. I thank very sincerely the parents and the kids who came forward today. The teachers took a lot of guts and the frustration that I sensed tonight is overwhelming. So I'm willing to move forward. I didn't, I can't believe that I'm saying this, given my high school nickname and all, but I'm looking forward to a bigger stick. Thank you.
From the chairman to the former chairman? Get ready, it's going to get a little rocky. Counsel McKeddie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm glad that the students and the teachers came here tonight, I want to thank them very much, it was actually quite moving, some of the statements that they made. And I, I'm telling you right now, things will change, especially after tonight. So I'm also looking forward to going to Boston. Other than that, I really don't have anything else except I just hope everybody to stay safe tomorrow with the snowstorm coming. Thank you.
Agenda item number 18, discussion next meeting date, please chairman?
Our next meeting is Monday, February 26th, 2024, 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 19, most adjourned? So move.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous vote present.